Well, good evening Wednesday night class. I am not here in person. And I thought about having, I did ask somebody to substitute teach for me for tonight. I am, Lord willing, in Clinton tonight for their summer series to teach, "God is Calling Us to Grow" is the topic that I was assigned. Originally on your schedule, this was supposed to be the last part of July. But I had to swap dates to help a brother out who forgot that it was his 50th wedding anniversary today. So I did him a favor, so I moved my schedule to where I would be gone tonight. But in lieu of the fact that I couldn't find a substitute teacher and I had already worked up a lesson, we felt like this was the best way to present the lesson. So sorry I'm not there in person, not alive in engagement or interaction with everybody that would normally be sitting here. But I'm gonna ask questions anyway and act as though there are people sitting here just so it looks natural as you watch me on the TV screen. Also be aware that this is streaming. It's actually being pre-recorded, but it will post as a stream. So if you're watching this at home, this is not a live broadcast from the church on a Wednesday night service. People are here obviously at this time and they've sung songs, maybe made announcements, and they're pushing play. But we wanted to give this to you as a scheduled livestream so that you could see the lesson just like the people are seeing at home. The exact thing that is being watched here or seen is the exact thing you're watching at home. So we continue our study on referring to Jesus. This is an exploration of the words and the terms that pertain to Christ. And so far, we've had an introduction to, of course, the name Jesus, which means Savior. And we also looked at the term that was given in the narrative of Matthew chapter one, where we see Joseph is visited by an angel of the Lord. And in that dream, he is told that what's happening is fulfilling the prophet Isaiah, where in Isaiah seven verse 14, the prophet had said that there would be a sign, and the sign would be a virgin will bring forth a son, and his name would be Emmanuel. And Matthew, chapter one, verse 23, Matthew translates that name for us because that is a Hebrew word. And so he's translating it to his Greek audience. But of course, obviously, as we're reading it out of our Bibles, in our English Bibles today, it's now translated into what its meaning is for the English readers. So Emmanuel means God with us. Say that with me. God with us. And today is a third installment of this series, session three. And we're looking at the designation of Jesus called the Word. In Greek, we have logos, or some people pronounce it logos. And logos is the Greek word for word. So when we're looking at this study tonight, it can get a little confusing sometimes when I'm doing a Bible study. Oftentimes, I say, now focus on that word, word. One way that the translators help us in understanding that word is a designated term for an entity is you will find this in John one verse one. It is capitalized. It's not just mentioning word as if it's any plain word that we would come across, but that this has a special meaning. And you can tell that from the context. You didn't really need the translators to give us this help. But obviously, since we're talking about this as a reference to Jesus, it's dignified to capitalize proper nouns, which a name is a proper noun. So you might read with me for verse one, if you're there, John chapter one, verse one. It says, "In the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was God." You have the word word three times, and you'll note all three times is capitalized. As we get started, I'd like to share a story that Ruben Shelley, in his book called The Names of Jesus, he tells a story that back in the twenties, an executive of a New York telephone company stopped in amazement one night to watch a man wearing a tuxedo climb out of a manhole at the corner of 42nd Street and Broadway. This well-dressed man turned out to be Barack Fouracre, head of the Bell Telephone operation in New York City. Why on a cold January night had a Bell executive come out of a Broadway theater, climbed into the manhole in the first place? What was their major crisis? Had the system broken down? Quoting him, "I knew there were a couple of my cable spicers working down there," said Fouracre. "So I just dropped in on them to have a little chat." It should surprise no one that he became known as the man of 10,000 friends. Fouracre's habit of visiting his employees at their work sites endeared him to them. It was his way of showing them he considered their work important. Don't you wish all bosses in all companies would think of their employees in that way? More than that, it was his way of valuing them as persons. Well, Shelley starts that story to introduce the concept that's behind this designation we have for Jesus, the Word. Because in the same way that Fouracre wanted to connect with his employees, God wants to connect with us. He has a desire to drop in. And you can say even today that God's desire for that, and there are obviously times that we know that we can be reminded of the fact that God is not far removed from any one of us. He's in our presence. Whenever two or three are gathered in My name, there I am among them. Is just one place in Scripture, Matthew 18 verse 20, for example. And that we have references in the Scripture that says, "The Lord is near," or "He's at hand." And it's good for us as followers of Christ, as believers in God, that we know this about God. And it can be sobering as well, knowing this about God. Because God sees all, and He hears all, and He knows all. And I don't think it takes you very long to get into the Bible when you start reading right off the bat that God knows what's going on when Adam and Eve are trying to hide because of their nakedness in the Genesis account, or when he's asking Cain, "Where is your brother Abel?" God already knows the reasons, and God already knows where Abel is. But in a very personal and a very real physical presence way, when Jesus was born, God dropped in on us, literally. God put on a body. There's flesh, skin, bones, muscle, ligaments, tissue, fatty tissue. There are organs. He has a mouth, eyes, ears, nose. He has eyelids. He has fingernails. He has hair growing on his arms. Did he look like what we often have as a picture of Jesus? I'm convinced, no, not some white Anglo-Saxon, right? He's a Jew. As a matter of fact, Scriptures speak of him as having no beauty in his appearance. Just a common, ordinary, everyday, average-looking man. And again, only talking about his appearance. Obviously, he was an extraordinary man, but he was man. So something we'll study a little bit later when referring to Jesus is oftentimes we'll hear the phrase, "Jesus, Son of God," and we'll hear, "Jesus, Son of Man." And we'll talk more about that in a minute, and that's gonna emphasize, or later in the study, in a few weeks. But that just indicates his humanity part of it. But God puts on this flesh. Well, the Greek word for flesh is the word carne. Everybody say carne. It's spelled C-A-R-N-E. And sometimes you might hear that if you're reading a menu at a Mexican restaurant. Sometimes you'll see the word carne asada, or you know, all kinds of references to carne. Chili con carne, you might have heard that chili with meat. Carne is flesh, or muscle, or meat. And so in this regard of Jesus, and you've heard the term, the incarnation of Christ. And the incarnation of Christ is a term that is used to describe the act of deity becoming humanity. Or in this instance, it's God becomes a man. He took on flesh. We'll see that in just a moment. So this story about Fouracre, for example, according to Shelley then, is reminding us of how much God wants to get in touch with us, so much so that He drops in in our world. You know, never have we had such a moment in history like we do now. Now, obviously, in the garden, God walked with Adam, or Adam walked with God, in the cool of the morning. We have those phrases that God, you know, was in their presence. But then they were driven out after they made the wrong decision and sin caused the death or the separation in that relationship between God and man. And then God's longing throughout the Scripture, of course, to restore that back, and in Jesus, that happens. So up to, since that time of the division, there's not been a time where God's presence has been so close and immersive in the human world until this time. Consider how the Creator connects to us. He created us in His image to begin with. He reveals to us His will. He doesn't leave us in the dark. He is very clear about, "Here are My expectations. Here's what you should do. Here's what you shouldn't do." And then finally, He gave us His presence. As we noted from Emmanuel, that term, "God with us." God with us. This term, word, is closely associated with the term Emmanuel in the sense that they both relate to the fact that the divine lived with and among the mortal, the immortal with the mortal. But in order for the immortal to be with the mortal, there had to be a parameter of mortality that was taken on by the immortal. And what Jesus does is He leaves behind privileges of a divine entity so that He could dwell among men as a man and suffer and live and breathe and get sick, or have joy, and cry. Jesus wept. All of these are examples of His humanity. And so Emmanuel embodies that, as well as the term word embodies that. But there's one little thing about word, and it's not a little thing, it's a significant thing. The Emmanuel part is just the presence part. But the word reference is going to say, yes, the presence is here, but in the presence is a complete picture of what God's will is, okay? It's one thing for God to be with you, but it's another to have Him revealed to you while He is with you. And what Jesus does in His ministry is often remind His disciples, "What you've heard Me say is nothing more than what the Father has told Me to say." In other words, you want to see the Father, you're seeing Me. If you want to hear the Father, you're hearing Me. I am the representation of God on this earth. I am with you, so that's God with you. That's Emmanuel. But I also will tell you what God wants. I am the Word. And it's not just spoken word, but it is a part of it. It's the actions and the teachings and the attitude of Jesus while He was in this world as the Word. So as we look at this God with us, baby in a manger, like we did last week, Emmanuel, we were transitioning now to a little bit further into a deeper study of this God with us now begins to interact with us. And about age 30, Jesus begins His professional ministry, where He publicly goes out and begins to proclaim, repent for the kingdom of heaven is at hand. Of course, chronologically speaking, that's going to be, you know, He's coming onto the scene. He is going around calling His disciples. He's baptized at the Jordan River by John the Baptizer. He's taken off into the wilderness, and he's tempted by Satan after having fasted for 40 days. And then he begins saying, repent for the kingdom of heaven is at hand. And we have right off the bat, the Sermon on the Mount, Matthew five. And he begins for the next three years, that those years of ministry where he's interacting and he's revealing God's will to mankind in a very personal way. He's not just a messenger, as a prophet was. He's not just an anglos, or an angel, which translates messenger. He is actual, real-life God telling us what God wants us to know, the Word. That's why John uses this. But there's so much more significance to it, probably for the Jews, than there ever has been for us today. At least on the surface, unless we've studied it in depth, we don't probably grasp the connection a Jew would have, and not only a Jew, but what a Gentile also would have of the term word. For again, for us, it's very easy just to think of word as being just nothing more than a generic term. And so I'm gonna give you a little bit of that tonight as we study in depth on referring to Jesus as the Word, and what does that mean? And so that we've, since we've read verse one, let's go over it again so we can get this broken down just a little bit, and then I'm gonna skip down to another verse. "In the beginning," this is verse one, that sounds familiar, right? Genesis 1:1, right? "In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth." We'll come back to a point to be made there about that. "But in the beginning was the word." I mean, He existed, this entity existed in the beginning, okay? "In the beginning was the word" means the word was in the beginning. "And the word was with God." So the word was with God. And so words in the beginning, word is with God. Where's God at? God's in the beginning. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. And one more little phrase, "And the word was God." Now, this is what will throw people off, throw them for a loop because, now wait a minute, was he with, or was he him? And it's both. Sometimes in our one-on-one Bible studies I have, when I'm studying with those to be new converts, so we go into the discussion of the Trinity and the Godhead, what all that means, God the Father, God the Son, God the Holy Spirit. I have a couple of different analogies that I use with that, and I won't get very deep here, but I'll just mention them so that you can maybe either remember this, or it'll help you. One way of looking at it is if you think of the components of an egg, you have a shell, you have egg white, and you have an egg yolk. But all three components are egg. It's egg material. It's egg in nature. If you were to do analysis, scientific analysis of each of those components, you would come out with a conclusion, this is egg. Now, it may not be the whole egg, but it's egg, right? But there are three distinctions with those components as well. Shell is, you know, kind of hard, and it's white, and the white is white, and the yellow is, or clear. And the yellow is, of course, yellow, the yolk. But it's egg. But another way of looking at it too is to think about the properties of water, for example. Water can come into three properties. It can be a gas, it can be a solid, it can be a liquid. But it's still water. None of the properties changes. The components or the ingredients of what water is. The gas is a steam, but it's water. Or it's mist, or fog, or whatever, but it's in a gaseous state, it is still water. In a liquid state, it's obviously water. And in a solid state, as in a cube of ice, it's still water. Things are different, but it's the same. The same is in the explanation of the Godhead, that you have God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit, and those three are one. But you have these three distinct personalities within this oneness of God. It's not the multiplicity of Gods. It's not more than one God. It's only one God. But you have these three personalities of representing God, and they have different roles that they have in the Godhead. So that's all I'll say about that for a moment. But now let's move on down to verse 14, because up to this verse, as John begins writing this gospel, none of his readers would at this point hear Jesus's name mentioned yet. They will not even understand, or maybe he's not told them in plain language yet that this is a person I'm talking about, but you'll see this in a minute. So I want to again read verse one, and then jump to 14 with me. Verse one, "In the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was God." And go to verse 14 now. The word became what? The word became what? Flesh. That's the process we noted a moment ago called incarnation. God putting on flesh. And it says, "The word became flesh and made His dwelling, His living, among us." He's not, He's not just near us anymore. He's not above us only anymore. He's now among us. And I love that idea that we have God with us like that. And it goes on to say, and this is John, of course, the apostle, "We have seen His glory, the glory of the one and only Son, whom came from the Father, full of grace and truth." Now, it's important to note that John puts a lot of emphasis, and he'll use this phrase, "one and only Son," throughout his writing. One noted place that I'll just mention briefly is John 3:16, "For God so loved the world that He gave His one and only Son, that whoever believes in Him should not perish but have eternal life." This one and only Son is a reference to, obviously, Jesus. Now, you and I, probably without even having gone as far as verse 14, have already deduced that this John is talking about Jesus, because we grew up reading this, right? If you were raised in the church, you knew John as one of the four Gospels, and these are stories of Jesus. But if you were the first-time reader of John's letter, you may not have picked up on that yet. But when you get to verse 14, there's no doubt in your mind that this word that he's been referring to is a person, and this person fits the description of the Messiah, the one and only from God, right? And it also says that he's from the Father, and he had come from the Father, and that he's full of grace and truth. Now, when you move on down, you will find that this grace and truth in verse 16 is referred to again, "Out of His fullness," of this word, of the one that became flesh, "out of His fullness we have all received grace in place of grace already given." And look at verse 17, "For the law was given through Moses." Grace and truth came through who? Grace and truth came from who? Go ahead, answer it among yourselves, okay? At home, answer this question, please. Grace and truth came from who? Jesus is named, isn't He? Jesus Christ, Jesus the Messiah. If you take what you see at the ending of verse 16, or 17, that grace and truth came through Jesus Christ, then that helped further explains verse 14 at the ending, when it talks about, "We beheld His glory, the glory of the one and only Son, whom came from the Father, full of grace and truth." Obviously, by the time you're into these first 16 to 18 verses or so of John's intro in his gospel, now you can see Jesus is the Word. Because He becomes flesh, He came from God, He's full of grace and truth. And we know that the one coming from God that's full of grace and truth is Jesus, so Jesus is the Word. You could read verse one then this way, "In the beginning was Jesus, and Jesus was with God, and Jesus was God." Word is just another way of referring to Him. And so the word becomes flesh, meaning the incarnation process means that God becomes a human being, and that's who Jesus was, God as a human being. Now, I want to go a little deeper though for tonight's study. What is behind the meaning of logos, the Greek word for word? What's the meaning behind that? Our English word comes from this Greek word, logos. And on the surface, it can just generically mean word or speech, the logos of God, the words of God, okay? But it has a deeper connotation, like I said, among Jews and Gentiles or Greeks in regards to both philosophical contexts and religious contexts. Let's talk about the Greeks first, for Gentiles. This concept of logos can be traced back 500 years before Christ ever came to earth. Heraclitus, a philosopher and writer from Ephesus, whose primary concern was to understand how order in symmetry in a world filled with chaos, to understand order in symmetry in a world full of chaos, he starts using this term, logos, as a personification, representing concepts of speech, ratio, and intelligence. In other words, there's an understanding that he's trying to have about how can there be order and a structure in a chaotic world? So he speaks of these senses that we use, the human reasoning, the logic thing, the way that we perceive things. And he says, "That's what I want to refer to as logos, a way to explain what's happening amidst the chaos." So the technical use of logos was picked up by Plato. You've heard of that guy, right? Plato, a century and a half later, to explain how one could have access to everything that was physical, intelligent, and moral. So Plato adds to this, not just an understanding of how you perceive things from a census level, but how you process it as well. And he used the term logos to embody, to continue or further on this personification of... When I say personification, let me pause there for just a second and say something about an example that we have in our Bibles today that would represent this, illustrate what I'm trying to say. When Solomon writes Proverbs, he speaks of wisdom as being a person. He'll say things like, "Get wisdom and cherish her," or "Treat her with respect." He's personifying wisdom, which is a feminine noun, by the way, in the Greek language. It's the Greek word, Sophia. It's where we get our English word, sophist. And those who loved knowledge and wisdom, the sophist, were called philosophers, because phileo means love, and sophist means wisdom. So what's a philosopher? One who loves wisdom. That's free, okay? I just want to put the little word etymology in there so you have a little background of that. But what he would do, Plato would add to it, a depth to it that went beyond the senses so that there's meaning, that there's application of the meaning, even to the point that morality is now involved. And so logos, in Plato's time, a century and a half later after Heraclitus, he's put logos on the pedestal of representing how a right-minded person ought to think, feel, and act. That's the logos, okay? This is 500, well, this is not 500 years before Christ, but this is a century and a half later after Heraclitus begins with that personification. Aristotle, who followed Plato, followed this idea, but included the view that logos was best represented in such exercises as public speech or rhetoric and logic. And so in his thinking, logos became a spoken personification that you would go around explaining to people. It's not just a concept that you have in your mind, but it's to be an oratory practice of telling people this ideal person. this ideal person, how they should act, feel, think, and perceive everything around them, that that's the logos example, a perfect example of how we all should strive to be like. Now, this was in Greek philosophy. This, this was around long before John's born, okay? Understand, there's an idea there that the audience of John's gospel has when they see him use logos in this way, they already are ahead of us in knowing, well, we've heard this before. This is a commonly accepted, almost a common household, uh, term to mean this. So he follows that, and it is, is, it's a way of saying, uh, according to Aristotle, when you have this complete picture of logos, of how one thinks, acts, feels, believes, and processes, and it affects his morals and standards of living and behavior, then you have this image being the final word as a standard. It's a standardized thing, okay? Consider the ways we use the term word today. Let's, let's go with that for, uh, for, for just a second. Uh, today, we might in a phrase say something like, "What's word, what's the word on the street?" In other words, maybe, "What's the news?" Or, uh, "What's the going thing?" Uh, "What's the price of wheat lately? Did you catch the news?" Or did you, did you see the latest report on this event over here or that event over there? You're trying to get the latest, you're trying to get the more complete picture of something. That's what we mean by the use of the word sometimes when we're using it today. "What's the word on the street?" Or, "Have you gotten a word from the judge yet?" Another, uh, a, a, a final ruling or decision, has a decision been made? Or, "She's, she's got the final word on who's charged of what." In other words, she's the, "All roads lead to the top, and she's at the top, she's the boss," right? The buck stops here type thing. So who's got the word? Who's the word on the matter? Have you gotten the word? What's the word on the street? Those are kind of the ways that maybe, uh, we are saying who's got the final say on the matter. And so that's the understanding Greeks would have had of logos. Now let's talk about Jews. What did Jews have as an understanding of logos? Well, Jews actually adopted a lot of their background to how the Greeks, the Gentiles, were already personifying it. Um, Jews were very immersed in Scripture. They committed a lot of Scripture by memory. The impact, however, from a life and legacy of Alexander the Great had changed the whole world by the time you lead up to Christ, uh, at least, uh, at least all the way back to fourth century B.C., you have much of your Jewish communities now speaking Greek, because that's the universal language. As time went on, Jews were so dependent on daily use of the Greek language that they produced a Greek translation of the Hebrew Bible. We know that as the Septuagint. Eventually, the Septuagint was the most used version of Scriptures by Jews by the time you get to the first century. Jesus quotes from it. The apostles used it. It was used often in the, in their public assemblies, and sometimes even in the synagogue. That's what would be used was the Septuagint. And because it was laced with obviously Greek language, Greek thought came into that as well, including this personification concept that was already adopted by Greeks of logos. Verses that use the term word were seen by Jews in a little different light, because the Hebrew Bible indicated more than just speech. It's not just the word on the street, it's not just a final word on something. They understood that this was the word, not just any word that humans have put on a pedestal to set up as their standard. This was a way of understanding that this is God's word on this. Now, sometimes you and I have heard this phrase before, "The Bible says it, I believe it, and that settles it." You've heard that before, right? I like the guy who added to that one time when he heard that, he said, "No, that's not right. The Bible says it, and whether I believe it or not, that settles it, because God's got the final word, God's got the final say." So it's not just a standardized word, it's God's standardized word. When they would read the term logos in the Greek Old Testament, this is their understanding. God speaks, and when He speaks, He acts powerfully. If God says He's gonna do a thing, you can take Him at His word. You see how that connected? Sometimes we say, "When God says it, meaning makes a promise, you can take it to the bank." What's that mean? It means you can count on it, it's gonna happen. When God wills to do a thing, it's gonna be done. When God does not want to do a thing, it's not gonna get done. So that to them, to the Jews, same historical background adopted from the Greeks, but they added a deeper meaning to say, "This is final authoritative word," okay? You know, when Jesus was teaching with his disciples or in the public squares or communities or in synagogues, do you remember how people perceived his teaching style? He's not like one of the other scribes or teachers, he speaks as one who has what? Anybody remember? You'll have to look this up, it's not in my notes, but you'll find, uh, uh, some references. He spoke as one who had authority. The final word. It's not just that he had a good confidence in his speaking, dynamic, that, uh, you know, he was well-prepared. It means that he had the final say on this. He spoke with authority. So that, that's, that's a pretty good, um, representation of how Greeks and Jews um, got this, uh, connotation to logos. Uh, I'm gonna look at Psalm thirty-three if you would with me, please. Let's turn over to Psalm thirty-three and verse six. I'm gonna give you a, a sense of how Jews connected themselves to this term logos. Uh, Psalm thirty-three, verse six. And by the way, um, those of you that are in the building, uh, to, tonight, as you're looking at and watching this video, uh, hopefully you've picked up the handout that is supposed to be on the table back there, and you have those for your notes. So this is gonna be, I think, in your notes. Psalm thirty-three, verse six says, "By the word of the Lord the heavens were made, their starry host by the breath of His mouth." The word of the Lord, you see, there is logos. When you read this in a Greek translation, they're gonna see logos, and they're gonna see something that powerful, and it was something acted upon in its final authority. The word of the Lord brought creation into being. We know that's true, because how did God create the world? Let there be light. He spoke it into being, there's light, right? He was, he would, he would speak the words, and it would come into being. God said, God said, God said. We'll look at a few of those in just a second. Uh, but also note that when the prophets spoke on behalf of God, Isaiah, Jeremiah, Ezekiel, Daniel, they would say, "Thus says the Lord." And they were the spokesperson for God, but they're telling us, "The message is from God, I'm just the messenger." So the message is from God, but I'm just the messenger, okay? But here's the word from God. We are told as preachers of the New Testament to preach what? Do you remember what Paul told Timothy? Preach the what? Preach the word, right? That we are giving logos, not our opinion, not our preference, not what, what we've concluded based only on our, um, examinations or observations, but we're to stay with the word. And that's what we teach, and that's what we need to preach. And the moment we go away from the word being the basis for all of our discourse, we've gone away or we've gone astray from God's will, in my opinion. Um, in Isaiah, chapter two, verse three, here's another example of this that I think is kind of interesting. Isaiah two, in verse three. It says, "Many peoples will come and say, 'Come, let us go up to the mountain of the Lord, to the temple of the God of Jacob. He will teach us His way, so that we may walk in His paths. The law will go out from Zion, the word of the Lord from Jerusalem.'" Now, as they go, obviously, they're not meaning that they're gonna hear the audible voice of God, but they're gonna hear the word of God spoken. They're gonna hear prophets, they're gonna hear scribes or Pharisees or teachers or synagogue rulers that are gonna stand up and start with, with, uh, the reading of the law. And to them, this is gonna be a perpetuating message. It's to go out from Jerusalem. They're gonna go get it and hear it, but it's gonna move on from there, and it's gonna travel. And so they saw it with a lot more impact than just mere speech in one event. It was speech to go forth. Isaiah will, in another place, say, "My word will go out, and it will not return back to me void." So it goes out and it comes back with, uh, with the harvest, you know? The word of God comes back to God, and it will have accomplished its purpose. That's a concept of logos as well. Back when Jews were in exile, the meeting place was called synagogue. You don't have that word in the Old Testament by the time Jesus is around. You have synagogues, whom Jesus would often go to first, or the apostles when they entered into a town. That's where they would go first to find an audience and talk. The Hebrew Bible would be read first, then there would be discussion to follow in the synagogue. As time went on, Jews were having more difficulty understanding ancient Hebrew texts, because, as I mentioned a moment ago, because of Alexander the Great's influence, Greek was more prevalent in their speech, and they didn't have a ready recollection of everything in the Hebrew. And so what they did, first orally, adopted a traditional running translation called the targum. And this targum was oral, it was spoken stuff about, here's what that Hebrew text means. And, and so the targum would be, the targum would be told. Now, after time, it would be documented and written down, but this oral rendition, this is the story that would be told that is based on the Hebrew text. It wasn't necessarily the reading of the actual Hebrew text. But the targums became the standardized, so standardized that then they began to be written down, okay? It's kind of like a commentary, but it puts it in a better light of you being able to understand it, maybe if you didn't understand or grasp the ancient languages. Well, there was such high reverence held among Jews regarding God's divine name that they avoided pronouncing it for fear they would break the third commandment, you know? Do not take the Lord's name in vain, right? Uh, as a matter of fact, I, I've been told this story several times. Scholars believe that when scribes were copying the actual manuscripts of the Hebrew text, whenever they came across God's personal name, which by the way is Yahweh, or we translate it as Jehovah, when they'd come to that name, they would pause right there. They'd put down their quill or their writing tool, they'd wash their hands ceremoniously, they'd pick up their pen, and they would meticulously write the four letters, only four Hebrew characters spelled Yahweh, Y-H-W-H, but in Hebrew, of course. They would take those letters with a lot of meticulous detail to write those down, put down the pen, and then go back and wash their hands ceremoniously. That was how much reverence and respect they had for God's name. And for fear that they couldn't pronounce it right and might so offend God, they wouldn't even say it. That was how they approached the name of God. It kind of reminds me of, if you, uh, followed the, the Lord of the Rings, um, not Lord of the Rings, Harry Potter series, uh, sometimes, uh, there was the reference to "Him whom shall not be named," you know? So it's kind of like that. And imagine if you will, if you come to the verse that has, you know, God's name in there like six, seven, eight times, it'd take you all day just to translate one verse, because you're doing the washing, putting the pen there, and washing and doing that again. But they got to a point where they had a term for the name, so they wouldn't, when they're referring to it, they don't have to say it, you know, the name, the name of God, you know the one I'm talking about. And the term they came up with is called the tetragrammaton. And tetra means four, drama means writing, uh, tetragrammaton, the, the name that's got the four letters in it, in other words. Uh, remember the tetragrammaton, a technical reference to the name Jehovah or Yahweh. And so that, that kind of adopted some synonyms, and the tetragrammaton actually is a more of an academic reference. What a, a common Jew would often say without saying the name is, you know, "The holy one." The holy one. Or, um, "The blessed one," or "The name." It's not, you know, "The name," it's "The name." So emphasis on the definite article there. And along with those, also logos was used. Word. You know, "The name," "The blessed one," "The holy one," you know, "The word." And they were referring to Jehovah, to Yahweh, by their use of the term "The word." So when you and I read John one, verse one, don't think for a moment that both Jews and Gentiles were in the dark. They're not confused about what John is saying. They may not have yet connected that to Jesus till he gets to verse fourteen, sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, where he connects Jesus to it. But they knew what John was talking about was of divine nature, of a divine sort of reference. And of course, it is the term to refer to Jesus, "The word of God." Now, that's a little bit of that background, maybe more than you asked for. Uh, just for the next, uh, five minutes, let's go over a couple of the things that I've got in my notes here, if I can get my fingers to operate right. I want to talk about three things really quick. Uh, we talked about the word incarnation. So that, that's the process of deity clothing itself with humanity. God putting on flesh. I want to talk about the pre-incarnate word before his flesh, the incarnate word while he's in his flesh, and the post-incarnate word after he left the flesh behind, when he ascended back to go back to the Father. The pre-incarnate word. It's obvious from John one, beginning in verse one, obviously, let's read that again. "In the beginning," he's there, right? That's pre-existing, that's pre-incarnation. So the pre-incarnate word, "In the beginning was the word, and the word was with God," that's still pre-incarnate. "And the word was God," that's still pre-incarnate. "He," verse two, "was with God in the beginning." And then it says, "Through Him," this word, "all things were made. Without Him, nothing was made that has been made. In Him was life, and that life was the light of all mankind. The light shines in darkness, and the darkness has not overcome it." And then when you go to verse fourteen, "The word became flesh and made His dwelling among us." Now we have the existing incarnate, the incarnate word, not the pre-incarnate, but now the incarnate word. He's with us now, okay? And then you have a incarnate word, or ex, uh, the incarnate word is when he went back to the Father. So very quickly, it's obvious that Jesus was a part of the creation. We have that confirmed in Colossians, chapter one, uh, verses, uh, fifteen through seventeen. You can read that together. Uh, if you notice in Genesis one, you'll, you're gonna see something that, um, is very, maybe peculiar. If you haven't seen this before, it may be a, uh, maybe something that surprises you a little bit. But if you look at Genesis one, you see, for example, he goes through here talking about, "God said," that's how it was created, verse three, verse six, "God said," verse nine, "God said," verse fourteen, "God said," this is Genesis one, verse twenty, "God said," verse twenty-four, "God said." Look at verse twenty-six, "Then God said, 'Let us make mankind in our image.'" Did you notice the plural personal pronoun usage? Who's God talking to? Up here in verse one, you say, "Okay, in the beginning, God." Okay, there's God, but who's He talking to here? "Let us make man in our image." This is supporting evidence for the fact Jesus, or the pre-incarnate word, was present with God. You have God the Father, God the Son, you also have God the Spirit. Look at verse two, "The Spirit of God was hovering over the face of the waters." So all three persons of the Godhead are present in the creation narrative. When you look at the incarnate word as he existed, uh, look with me at Philippians, chapter two, beginning in verse five. Philippians two, verse five. And we're gonna see this, I've got my Bible. Uh, the Bible with my tabs on it is actually in my pickup. And of course, tonight, I've got it with me at Clinton, but the Bible I'm using tonight for this recording uh, doesn't have the tabs. Philippians two, verse five, it says this. Uh, verse six, well, verse five, "In your relationship with one another have the same mindset as Christ Jesus." And then verse six, "Who, being in very nature, God." In other words, Jesus Christ was in nature, the very nature, he was God. "Did not consider equality with God something to be used to his own advantage. Rather, he made himself nothing by taking the very nature of a servant, being made in human likeness." Incarnation, right? So here's the word incarnate. "And being found in appearance as a man, he humbled himself, he became obedient to death, even death on a cross." even death on a cross." Now, in the following verses, you have what I would refer to as the post-incarnate word. "Therefore God exalted him to the highest place, gave him the name that is above every name, that at the name of Jesus every knee should bow, in heaven, on earth, and under the earth, and every tongue confess and acknowledge that Jesus Christ is Lord, to the glory of God the Father." So there's the position of the post-incarnate God. Now, remember, Jesus in the Great Commission said, "All authority has been given to me in heaven and on earth." In Acts one, we see the ascension story of him going back to be with the Father. You also see this at the ending of Mark's Gospel, in chapter sixteen, that he had gone, he was taken up. But it says, "He still worked through signs and wonders with his disciples." So, he leaves, but he's also present, but physically, he's left, he's spiritually present with his disciples, continuing to work through them. And then I want to close with one passage, and we'll be done for tonight. And that's found in Hebrews, chapter one, Hebrews one. And we read this in the first three verses. "In the past, God spoke to our ancestors through prophets at many times and in various ways; but in these last days, he has spoken to us by his Son." In other words, God revealed his will through prophets like Moses, and Jeremiah, and Isaiah, and Ezekiel, Daniel, Elijah, and Elisha. "But in these last days, here in the first century, he spoken to us by his Son, whom he appointed heir of all things, and through whom also he made the universe." John one, one through three, Colossians one, fifteen through seventeen. Here, in Hebrews one, verse two, you have Jesus being connected to the creation. Look at verse three as we close. "The Son is the radiance of God's glory and the exact representation of his being, sustaining all things by his powerful word." Jesus's words was the word of God. It said, "After he had provided purification for sins, he sat down at the right hand of the majesty in heaven; so he became as much superior to the angels as the name he has inherited is superior to theirs." Jesus referred as the word of God shows us that while he was on earth, and after he ascended, embodied the revelation of God to man. We read of Jesus when he was in his body in our New Testament, through the Gospel specifically, but as what the other apostles wrote too, and we have him as the word of God. So I hope that helps you. I think next week, obviously, we have Vacation Bible School, there will not be a class. And then the following lesson, we're gonna get into another one of the terms. I forget what it said on the schedule, but you have your schedule. Hope everybody has a great week. I'll see you, Lord willing, Sunday. Thanks for watching this on the video. And for those of you at home, I hope you've gotten something out of this, and make sure you pick up the notes before you leave. We'll see you later. Bye-bye.